All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order on Monday, February 5th, 2024, and ask if you would all please rise and join the village board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Grassi?
Here.
Trustee Labads?
Here.
Trustee Schwingback?
Here.
Trustee Baldino?
Here.
Trustee Bertucci?
Here.
Trustee Dunnington?
Here.
Trustee Shirley?
Here.
Trustee Tenalia?
Here.
President Hayes?
Here. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have three sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first is from our committee, the whole meeting, from January 16, 2024. Any changes or passes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the committee of the whole minutes from January 16, 2024.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, second by trustee Tenalia. Any other questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Next, the village board meeting minutes from our January 16, 2024 meeting. Any changes or passes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval of the village board meeting dated January 16 of 2024.
Second.
Motion by trustee Schwingback, second by trustee Baldino. Anything from the board, anything from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And finally, our closed session minutes from that same evening, January 16, 2024. Any changes or passes?
I'll move to approve the village board closed session from January 16, 2024.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, second by trustee Labads. Anything from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We move on then to the approval of the accounts payable, and I call on trustee Bertucci.
I move approval of the warrant register for the check date, January 30, 2024, in the amount of $3,394,945.92.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, second by trustee Schwingback. Any questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Well, next, under recognitions and presentations, we have some very special young ladies with us here this evening, and they're coaches, and we will recognize them in just a second. But I just want to take a second to also recognize some other accomplishments within school District 25. Lots of exciting things going on in District 25 over the past school year, and so I just want to recognize the District 25 School Board of Education, recognized as one of 45 school boards out of 852 school districts in the state of Illinois, to earn the Illinois Association of School Boards 2023 School Board Governance Recognition Designation. This recognition is designed to acknowledge those school boards that have engaged in activities and modeled behaviors that lead to excellence in local school governance in support of quality public education. And I know I hear all the time, I know our village board hears all the time, about why people moved Arlington Heights, why they stay in Arlington Heights, and it's really first and foremost is the quality of the education here in our community. And so, congratulations to all those at the District 25 School Board and all of our local school boards for all the great work that they do, teaching our next great generation of Americans, including those young ladies who we have with us here this evening. And so, I also want to acknowledge the other members of the cross-country teams within District 25. The Thomas Middle School Timber Wolf Boys Team actually placed second at the state meet, and we congratulate them as well. And the South Middle School Teams placed ninth, putting all four cross-country teams in District 25 in the top 10 in the state. And so, congratulations to all those runners, both boys and girls, who did such a great job representing their teams, their schools, their families, and our community in last fall in the cross-country state meet. But we're here this evening to recognize the state champions from Thomas Middle School. And so, I just want to call the coaches forward, first of all. If the three coaches would come forward and join me up here. And so, first, we have Coach Becky Fano. Becky? Congratulations. I'll give you that. And then, Coach Joe Kim. Joe, congratulations. And Coach Tad Slawinski, congratulations, Tad. Job well done. And before we call the girls up, I would like you, Coach Tad, to just tell us a little bit about this team and the girls that we've got with us this evening.
All right, well, thank you. I just want to thank the board for having us and recognizing this great accomplishment. Anytime you can win a state championship in anything, at any level, I think it's really impressive. And from the very first day of practice, we started in early August before school started, they showed up at 7:00, and from that moment on, they put in a lot of hard work. They worked through really hot days, rainy days, cold days as the season went on, and their confidence never wavered. We were just talking, they were in five invitationals throughout the course of the season, and they won all of them except one when we were missing a couple of girls, and they only lost that one by a few points. So, for the whole season, they worked hard, they were confident, they supported one another, and they just won, and they won, and they won, and then they got to the state meet. And with halfway through the race, they were down like 12 points, and they had one of the best second halves of the race, you know, that they could have had. Three of the girls passed like, I don't know, like 20 people each, and they pulled it out and stayed champions. So, it's just really been a fun ride. They're a great group of girls, they should be really proud of themselves, and it's been great celebrating the accomplishment.
Hold on to that microphone for just a minute, let me take this back. I just want to read the certificate for the coaches, if I might. The Village of Arlington Heights Certificate of Recognition is presented to these three coaches for your outstanding contribution as coach of the 2023 Illinois Elementary School Association Class 4A State Champion Girls Cross Country Team. Your efforts in teaching, supporting, and leading the Thomas Middle School team of dedicated and talented girls to strive for and achieve excellence are a tribute to your hard work, enthusiasm, and professionalism, and reflect great credit on you, your school, and your community. The Arlington Heights Village Board therefore congratulates you on this impressive accomplishment, which has inspired us all to run the race before us with heart and perseverance. We are exceptionally proud that Arlington Heights is the hometown of such an amazing team. So, let me give that back to you. And Todd, if I could have you just... Could just read the names of the girls, and let me give you that.
All right. First up is all-state athlete, fifth place in state, Nora Itz.
Let me, I'm gonna read this to you, so... This is the Village of Arlington Heights Certificate of Recognition presented to Nora Itz as a member of the 2023 Illinois Elementary School Association Class 4A State Champion Girls Cross Country Team. Hold on. Starting with 6:30 a.m. practices in August, the Thomas Middle School Girls Cross Country Team ran with heart and perseverance each day, culminating in winning the state meet at Maxwell Park in Normal, Illinois on October 14th, to become the 2023 ISEA state champions for the first time in Arlington Heights School District 25 history. In addition to dual meets, the team competed at several larger invitational meets throughout the season. The larger races had 100 to 150 runners and more than 10 teams competing, and the Thomas team placed first at all but one meet, and you, Nora, placed fifth overall at the state meet, earning all-state honors. So, this certificate is presented to you in recognition of your high achievement and dedication to excellence, which reflects great credit on you, your family, your team, your school, your community, and we wish you nothing but the best in all of your future endeavors as you run the race before you. So, congratulations. Now, you can take it. Can I get pictures? You can come up. Okay. Why don't you come over here? And next?
Next is another all-state athlete placing 12th in state, Ann Park.
Congratulations. I'm not gonna read it again, but congratulations, and as your coach said, you placed 17th overall in the state meet, earning all-state honors, so congratulations to you. Let's take a picture. All right. Next?
All right, this athlete's not present, but I will just recognize her. Ada Fisher had a great race and finished 26th at state.
Good to give that to you.
McKenna Fox is the next athlete. I don't believe she's also with us, so... Also not with us, but a sixth grader on the team like McKenna's, Megan Fritchie. All right, so one of those runners that passed a whole lot of people on that second half of the race, seventh grader Adelaide Gala.
Congratulations. Job well done. Here, let's take a picture. Hold on. Hold it. There you go. All right, congratulations.
Okay, next up is Claire Lammersfeld.
Congratulations, Claire. Nice job. All right, thanks.
Our next up is Frances McDonald.
Congratulations, Frances. Nice job.
Lily Nelson.
Congratulations, Lily. Nice job.
All right, and then another one of those girls I talked about who really came through in the second half of the race is sixth grader Madeline Surrer.
Congratulations, Madeline. Nice job. Okay, thanks.
And lastly, but not least, Clara Vincent. Also passed a lot of people.
All right, congratulations, Clara. Nice job. Here, let's take a picture. We get everybody in, and we'll take a big picture?
Yep. Sure. So, I just wanted to mention, you know, these athletes and 11 athletes that represented us as state are just a small part of a much, much, much bigger team. I think at the beginning of the season, we had over 150 athletes that participated in our cross-country program between the boys and girls, sixth through eighth grade. So, you know, this is what the end result was, but we had a whole lot of people that these, that these girls represent, that all worked hard throughout the course of the season. So, it's representative of all of them.
Okay, thank you, thanks. Let's take one more picture. If everybody would squeeze in. Yeah, show your, show your certificates. There you go. Okay, thanks, everybody. Congratulations. Okay, we have no other recognitions or presentations, so we'll move on in the agenda to citizens to be heard. And I do have one blue card from an individual who wants to speak on an item not on the agenda, and that's Ronald Stolberg. Ronald, and you're just reminded of the three-minute timer.
Recently, Chicago was considering banning natural gas heat energy. This is bad for many reasons. First, power plants are 40% efficient while furnaces are 90% efficient. It takes less energy to push gas through a tube than it takes to push, move electricity through a wire. Third, it takes more equipment to make electricity than the heat. And fourth, we don't have the infrastructure. Changing from gas to electric will cost over twice as much and will be over twice as harmful to our environment. Nuclear energy is more expensive, more dangerous than fire. The nuclear waste is more toxic than smoke, the waste lasts longer, the waste lasts, from nuclear energy lasts a million years. Someday, there will be enough surplus of wind energy that we can heat from wind. But even then, if you don't want to wait for a windy day to take a nice warm shower, you better keep your gas hot water heater.
Okay, thanks, Ronald. Is anyone else who wishes to address the board on an item not on the agenda?
Mayor, I believe there was one other card that was an item not on the agenda. And I can come find it if it's gotten confused.
Yes, okay, thank you. That's Nestor Reyna. Nestor, welcome.
My name is Nestor Reyna. I am the property owner of a vacant lot in Arlington Heights Road at the Scarsfield Subdivision, south of Rockwell, and I'm here to request permission from the board to bring the sanitary sewer to the, to the lot from, from across the street, from a 15-inch that is available. I'm a licensed professional engineer, and I have requested that permission from the village. They asked me to, engineering department asked to get the permit from Ida, which I have already obtained, and I have six months, or actually to June 30th, to bring the sewer in order to comply with that permit from Ida. But I've been asked to submit architectural plans ahead of time in order to, to be able to connect, to bring the sewer. So, my request is respectfully to request permission to bring the sewer, and then I can proceed with the design of the house.
Okay. That item is not on the agenda tonight, and so we're not gonna be able to discuss it, or certainly not vote on it, but I understand it's with the staff already?
Yeah, I'm happy to follow up with the, with the gentleman and make sure that we can provide the, you know, most efficient, most efficient process possible. So, I'm happy to give you my business card, and feel free to give me an email or give me a call, and we can talk about this a little bit further. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reyna.
Thank you, very.
All right, anyone else in the audience on items not on the agenda? All right, then I will close the citizens-to-be-heard portion of our agenda and move on to old business, and we do have one item to report out this evening, and I will call on trustee Bertucci.
I'll move to concur in the mayor's appointment of Mark Polis for appointment to the Arlington Economic Alliance as the chamber member, term ending April 30, 2024.
Second. Motion by trustee Bertucci, second by trustee Schwingback. Any questions or comments from the board or anything from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mark, where'd you go? There you are. If you come forward to the podium, and we'll make it official, and if you'll just raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye and state your full name.
Aye, Mark Polis.
Having been appointed to the Arlington Economic Alliance.
Having been appointed to the Arlington Economic Alliance.
In the village of Arlington Heights.
In the village of Arlington Heights.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office according to the best of my ability.
Of the office according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Mark. We know you will. I'm glad if you would. I'm gonna present you with the village logo pin to wear proudly as an appointed member of this board, and if you could take your oath and sign it with our village clerk. So, congratulations, look forward to working with you. All right, we have no other old business, and so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any members of the board wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Members of the audience wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, are there any members of the board who wish to vote no or pass on any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by trustee Tenalia, second by trustee Labads. Roll call.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. We move on then to new business, and we do have three items tonight. First is a request for a special use permit to allow a permanent commercial antenna on the principal building facade and a temporary commercial antenna in the parking lot and associated variation for the property located at 1500 West Shore Drive. Is the petitioner present? Come forward if you would, and just introduce yourself and tell us what you're looking to do here.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Lee. I represent Verizon Wireless, and as you mentioned, we are here to ask approval for a temporary and permanent communication facility at the subject property, 1500 West Shore Drive. Just to kind of give you an idea of where this is, if you're not familiar with it, it's the southeast corner of Dundee Road and 53. So, the reason why we're here to ask for approval is because Verizon Wireless currently has, well, they did have a site that's half a mile southeast of this property. They were located on a communications tower, a monopole type of tower, and the property owner has decided that they are not going to renew their lease with the tower owner. So, the tower owner must de-com the tower and remove it, and so Verizon, as a tenant on that tower, has been forced to remove their equipment off the tower, leaving them with no cellphone coverage to the area. As I'm sure all of you are aware, cellphone coverage is vital and critical to the public. I mean, we all have cellphones and use them in case of emergencies, and so if we did not have communications service in that area, then there would be thousands of residences and numerous businesses that would no longer have the ability to use their cellphone if they were a Verizon subscriber. We, so we are looking to locate antennas on an existing building located at 1500 Shore Drive, but in the meantime, we are looking to install a temporary communications facility in the parking lot of that building, and, and the reason for that is because while we're going through this process to get approvals, to avoid losing that coverage, the staff has worked with us and allowed us to install what we call a cowl, it's a cell on wheels. So, it's basically a truck that, you know, has a tower that's erected in the air, it's approximately 60 feet high. It's enclosed by a 50, by 60-foot fenced-in area. The tower has guide wires for support anchored to the ground with, you know, huge concrete blocks, so it's very safe to keep it there. It's located in the parking lot of this building. The current building is at very, well, at low capacity as far as how many offices they've rented out in that building, so the parking lot is hardly being used. I went over there a couple of weeks ago, and there was like six cars in the parking lot, and it has the capability of having hundreds there. So, it does take up quite a bit of area, but it's not detriment to the other tenants that use this building at all. We are asking for a landscape waiver around the communications facility with it being installed in the middle of a parking lot, and its temporary nature and, you know, installing plants and cement is not really feasible, we'd like to ask for a variance to not be required to install that landscape buffer. So, this is a site plan of the temporary communication facility. As you can see, it's, it's there, located in the, in the parking lot. It's got power and, and fiber that's routed to it. There's, it's unmanned, there's, there's no trips that are required to and from the facility. It will be removed once our permanent site is up and running, and so it's, like I said, just gonna be temporary, will be removed in the very near future. So, the permanent communication facility does require special use permits. We are looking to install antennas on an existing building. There are already antennas on the building, there are several carriers who have come and gone on the building, but there's currently antennas there in use, and we will be installing in the same exact fashion that they have installed, so we're not doing anything different than previous wireless carriers. And as mentioned, it will provide a permanent solution to the area of cellphone coverage, and the antennas will be installed on the facade of the building. The, the roof of the building is enclosed, so all the cabinets that are installed, that are associated with those antennas, will be installed in an enclosed area. You won't be able to see them from the ground whatsoever. The antennas will be painted to match, to blend in with the building, so again, it'll look very similar to what's already there. Here's a site plan of how we'll install those antennas, so they're installed in three different azimuths. This gives them coverage that surrounds the building. They're strategically placed on corners of the building and pointed in a direction that the RF engineer needs to get the coverage that he needs, and so, like I said, they'll be flush-mounted to the facade of the building, painted to match, and the cabinets and, they'll associate with the antennas will be installed on the interior of that enclosure, so it will not be visible from the ground whatsoever. Here's another view of how it will look. This is the southeast elevation. I've got other elevations as well. So, there's also the antennas that you see that are not related to Verizon's equipment, they're existing. With the west elevation, and here's the northeast. So, here's some photo simulations of what the antennas will look like once they're installed. On the left, you see the before, on the right, you can see the after. It's very hard to nose them from the street because they're painted to match the building, and they don't stick off very far from the building, they're close-mounted to the, to the exterior wall, so it blends in with the building, and it's pretty much have to be looking for it to, to see it. Here's another view from the west. And here is a east elevation. Thank you for your time. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, first, we'll have a staff presentation. Mr. Perkins?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'll be brief and won't pull up the staff presentation, but they are requesting a special use for the temporary antenna as well as the permanent antenna. The temporary antenna will be conditioned upon the proceed at your own risk declaration that the board approved in October last year to allow Verizon to install that temporary antenna to continue cellphone coverage while they, you know, filed this application and completed their engineering. There are a couple of other conditions from staff that Plan Commission concurred with. They include painting the antennas to match the color of the building facade and then removal of any abandoned or unused antenna equipment on this building, so having them remove that. And then, there was a condition, excuse me, condition added by Plan Commission for some additional engineering details to be submitted as part of the building permit, so both staff and Plan Commission recommended approval of this request.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perkins. Well, I, I think it makes sense, I really like the fact that you're at least attempting to hide the way these things look from the street, because I've seen some that are just so visible, and it really makes the building look terrible, but I appreciate your efforts to try to make them less visible, so appreciate that. Trustee Tenalia?
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. So, really quickly, a couple of questions here. How long either staff or you as a petitioner, how long will the temporary antenna be there?
So, good question. So, once we receive the approvals that we need here tonight and our building permits and everything that we need, we are ready to go full speed and start construction. We guesstimate that from that point on, it will take one to three months, and the reason why there is such a gap there is, is really just because of ordering equipment. So, you know, some-
How long either staff or you as a petitioner, how long will the temporary antenna be there?
So, good question. So, once we receive the approvals that we need here tonight, and our building permits and everything that we need, we are ready to go full speed and start construction. We guesstimate that from that point on, it will take one to three months. And the reason why there is such a gap there is, is really just because of ordering equipment. So, you know, sometimes you, you go to order all the equipment that you need for a site, and then there's that one RRU, or there's that one cabinet or radio that's on backwater. And, and so, you know, you, you have everything you need to get the site up and running, and it's constructed, and you've got everything up there, but you can't turn it on because it's missing that one little part. So I've been talking to the Verizon team, and, and we are anticipating that it will take anywhere from one to three months.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that on the, on the short side, it's 30 days, could be as much as 90, but you don't expect more than 90? And then the, the van and the fencing and the concrete weights and all that will be removed at that same time?
Sir.
All right, great. And you're saying it's going to take the place of some other antennas that used to be there or no longer functioning?
So, one thing I do want to clarify, because I did clarify this at the last Planning Commission meeting, is that when you say remove, abandoned, or unused, I, I want to clarify that any abandoned equipment will be removed. But there's currently Sprint and T-Mobile that are present at the site. Now, T-Mobile and Sprint merged. So what they've been doing since that merger is that they have been researching all the different sites that they have together and figuring out how they can optimize their network based off, you know, upgrading some, removing others. So this site is one of those. And so all the antennas that are on that building are hooked up to cabinets and are transmitting on and off. But there are periods of time that, that there will be an antenna that is not being, that doesn't have frequencies transmitting through it. That doesn't mean it's abandoned, it just means that there are future plans for the antenna in the future. So we have agreed to remove any abandoned equipment off the building, but I just wanted to clarify that point on the.
So how do you determine that? I, I mean, is the owner of the building here tonight?
I did not see him in the audience, but I did have a meeting with him prior, and he has told me that everybody that's on the building is paying rent for that space. They have a contract to leave that antenna there. And the antennas, they're turned on and off, you know, as, as they figure out which direction they're going to go, whether their upgrade or the removal of the site. So this is not something that we are in control.
Right.
But
Yeah, they're in.
As far as the building owner is concerned, he is receiving rent for that space, and they do have the legally contractual to be there.
So, so Charles, what's your thought on that? How many do you think, I mean, are you in connection with some of these other carriers already, or no?
Not the carriers, but we'd have to follow up with the building owner.
Okay.
And that, you know, when they were, you know, when there comes a point that some of those are abandoned, we'll have to make sure that the building owner has them removed.
Yeah. So how many are you putting up altogether? I, I saw the pictures here, but it's hard to see.
It's a three per sector, nine total.
Nine total?
Yes, sir.
And how many are, are you thinking you're going to remove? How many?
We, we are not able to remove any antennas that don't belong to us.
None of those, none of the ones that are quote unquote abandoned are going to come down right away then, or no?
The property owner has made us aware that there are no abandoned antennas on this tower.
So zero is the answer to that one?
Correct.
Okay, just nine new ones?
Correct.
Okay.
And if I could clarify on the date, the declaration for proceeding around risk had a date to remove the temporary antenna structure by March 31st of this year. Now, you know, as it gets closer, they have indicated they may be seeking an extension to that time period. But they are currently held to that date unless it's extended.
Okay. And is staff handling that then, or?
We'll have to consult with our attorney, but I believe it may be able to be extended by the village manager upon his approval. We'll have to verify that.
Okay. And I guess the last question, the question I had here is, how long is your new lease going to be? You know, you, you told the story of how sometimes these disappear.
Right.
And you're, you're stuck with this situation. What will you be doing on this new lease?
The terms of the leases are typically 25 years in length. They have an initial period, and then they have automatic renewals. So these sites are very expensive to build. You know, Verizon definitely intends to stay in this location for a very long time. They wouldn't have been leaving the last location if they hadn't been forced to. And I've been in this industry for 25 years, and typically when they install antennas on a tower, they don't go anywhere for a very long time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Anything further from the board? Anything from the audience? If not, is there a motion? We have unanimous approval from the Plan Commission.
I, I'd move to concur with the Plan Commission.
Second.
Motion by trustee Tenalia, seconded by trustee, who was it? Schwingback? Anything further from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, good luck to you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
The next item under new business is the request of Ramen USA for a land use variation to allow a 1,616 square foot bakery products wholesale and production facility in the B2 district with no associated variations. Is the petitioner present? Come forward if you would. And just introduce yourself and tell us what you're looking to do here.
Hi, thank you very much.
Can you pull that up? Yeah, there you go.
Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak out here. And my name's Casey Kimori. I'm a representative in the business, Japanese restaurants in Arlington Heights named Ramen USA. And we're here for the petition of the land use variation, like you said. And do some presentation with the Kristy Tindarok. Like, probably you noticed that now I'm Japanese and I'm, English is a second language. So I don't want to give you the hard time to understand what I'm saying here. So I brought Kristy Tindarok, and she's an operation manager for my restaurant, and she's going to do a presentation.
Okay, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us, and I appreciate your time tonight. First, I just like a little bit of background about Casey's eyes history. I've been working with him since 2020. It's been quite a journey, especially 2020 was during the COVID time. And I'm excited to see what our future holds, especially as he seeks to expand his business. Okay, so I.
You don't have to lean over that much.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. So first off, our presentation, I'd just like to say that Ramen USA right now, we currently operate as a full in dine-in service restaurant. But it wasn't always like that. And then 2020, of course, with all the imposed restrictions and complications we had, due to Corona, we had a very tough time, like with other businesses. We only had only takeout service at that, at that time, as well as our client, Mitsuo Marketplace. You might have heard, it's a big Japanese grocery store near the Gulf and Algonquin Road. They were one of our clients at that time, and they still are. And we were doing, we've been doing, delivering packaged food service to them at that time as well. And as, during that time, of course, it was difficult, and we didn't see much of sales growth and a lot of, a lot of complications, like as I said. Now, since 2020 up until now, we've been seeing a lot of increase, especially with our restaurant operations and as well as our wholesale operations for Mitsuo Marketplace. And of course, as we are seeing increase in operations, we like, in order to compensate, we're looking to expand our space, of course, doing it so safely and more efficiently. Okay, for our second slide, so we've already submitted a building permit for the 926 unit. And this former tenant used to be the State Farm office. So there isn't too much of alterations, and some simple alterations we're looking to do is install like hand sinks, prep tables, refrigeration, wire shelving. Just of course to compensate because of our growing business. And right, as our, our last point is that our main purpose is, you know, extend the space for our packaging operations, and of course, additional storage space. Okay, so for this slide, this is just our architect floor plan. Some, like I said, some simple alterations that we'd like to do is, you know, demolish old furnishing tiles, anything that needs to be replaced, like hand sinks, new floor tiles. And of course, we're doing this all in guidelines according to the Health Department and Building Department. Of course, everything else is going to be NSF safe and certified.
And the left side floor plan is currently what it looked like. And right side, and the floor plan has the equipment after the alterations, what it looked like.
Okay, okay. Some with our, you know, our work environment and our operation volume. So we just have a little pie chart, give you guys a bit of a visual of how our operations are going towards the restaurant and more towards our wholesale operations. Present conditions of our ratios of operation volume, such as our cook, pack, process, delivery, labor costs, revenues in our operations. Of course, these percentages are, are various according, you know, seasonally, how they traffic, of course, our manpower situation. Casey would like to.
Additionally, let's say, the revenue percentage is 70% wholesale and 30%. And of course, the Mitsuo Marketplace is a larger scale business. So last three years, they give us more business. And our restaurant business, we started the new menu and new style last year. And we catching up more sales and pick them up. And ours operations, 40% or 60%. Wholesale is 40%. We operation, we start doing packaging and molding sushi and boxing and delivery in the morning time. We start at 6:30 in the morning till 11:30 in the morning time. Then we start doing the preparation for the restaurant business, 11:30 to 9:00 PM. That's why it's the, the, our operation is, the 40% is wholesale and 60% of the restaurant business.
Okay, visuals, my favorite. All right. Okay, so first top, we have, that is our delicious looking menu. This is some of the items we currently serve at the restaurant. You may have heard of Japanese ramen, that's our specialty. And also, you can see down, going down, we have like fresh sushi poke bowls and Japanese curry. And the second below in the bottom, those are some samples of our packaged products that we use. As you can see, there's sushi in the middle. We have Japanese rice balls called onigiri, rice bowls as well, and, you know, various kinds. So, you know, please come and try it, yes. Okay.
Lastly.
Mr. Kimori, just move it by the microphone if you would.
Lastly, as a business owner, we really appreciate for the opportunity to the business in Arlington Heights. And I personally had the hard time after the pandemic. Now, I'm doing this business around 10 years in different locations. And then moving like 2020 here, and I, I luckily found this property and I started doing the takeout to-go restaurants. And I appreciate the landlord here, the team, and he gave me the really supportive helps. And so this is my challenging to grow our business as a restaurant and a wholesaler. And our, our goal is to keep a quality of the products in the service for our customers and keep us, improve our business in Arlington Heights.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perkins?
Yes, I'll quickly go through a presentation here, explain the actions that are being requested. As mentioned, they are seeking land use variation for wholesale production of food items. Typically, that is allowed in the manufacturing district, but not in the B2, which is our commercial shopping center retailing district. So you'll notice some conditions limiting the use to prevent this being a fully wholesale or growing into the whole, you know, the entire section of the shopping center. So it is in Sorry Ridge Plaza next to Lowe's Home Improvement at Algonquin and Gulf Roads. We did take a look at their proposal. They did move in as a restaurant, as mentioned, in 2020. There was an expansion in 2023 that was approved. At that time, it was believed to be an expansion of the restaurant. Nobody realized that it was a wholesale production project or, or part of the business. And then recently, they submitted a permit for a second expansion, and then it became clear that they needed these approvals. So this is the floor plans that we were provided with the application. On the left is the restaurant portion with the portion in the middle being their first phase of their wholesale. And then on the right is, is their expansion. We did look at the parking, the maximum occupancy of parking is about 56%. Even accounting for the fact that about 23 of those spaces are behind the shopping center. Even at the busiest times, there were, there were still 25 spaces available. And that was just the one or two off times at that level of parking. So we don't foresee parking being an issue here. So staff and Plan Commission did recommend approval of it. There is the one condition that the petitioner or any future tenant must keep the restaurant or a comparable use. So it could be a bakery or some, a cafe or something that's a food service that provides retail operations in order to keep the wholesale and production facility. And if the restaurant or comparable use were to cease, then the wholesale production would need to cease. But with that, both staff and Plan Commission recommend approval of this to the board.
Thanks, Mr. Perkins, appreciate it. Are you in agreement with the condition of the Plan Commission's recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything further from the board? Trustee Grassi?
I just want to thank you for, for choosing Arlington Heights, but especially for trying to adjust to the challenging times and what you needed to do for the business, but also make it work for you and for the community. So thank you. I'm, I'm willing to make a motion, please. So I move to approve PC 23-018, a land use variation with the following conditions as presented.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, seconded by trustee Schwingback. Any further questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Congratulations, good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have one other item under new business, and that's the appeal of the Design Commission denial of a proposed new teardown single-family residence at the property located at 17 North Dunton Avenue. Is the petitioner, the appellant, present?
We are, sir.
All right. If you'd just introduce yourself, sir?
I will be happy to. I'm Jerry Penderzky Jr. I'm the attorney for Mastercraft Builders and Carpentry that brings this appeal before you this evening.
Okay, you can proceed.
Very good, thank you, sir. Good. You know, we are, as Mr. Mayor, you suggested, we're seeking the reversal of the denial of the demolition permit that we had sought for 716 North Dunton Road. It's an old home, it's approximately 140 years old. And as I'll mention in a few moments, it is an extraordinary disrepair and simply has no practical value of any kind. My client, as I've mentioned in our brief with an investor, had actually bought this property and two others with the idea of building three homes on the Dunton block. Two of those homes have actually been built. They're beautiful homes. This home will actually be the third in the trilogy and actually sits between the two homes that have actually been built on, on Dunton itself. We believe with great respect to the commissioners on the Design Commission that they simply made a mistake, that they should have, under the terms of the conditions of the ordinance you've drafted, they should have granted the demolition permit. You know, briefly, there's three requirements that the Design Commission has to deal with when someone asks for the demolition of a home here in Arlington Heights in a residential district. One, they have to take a look at the home plans, and they have to determine whether the home plans meet the village design guidelines. You know, we suggest to you tonight that that really is a non-issue. It's a beautiful home that's been built, that's been designed to be built. It complements the two existing homes on either side. In fact, all three homes have been designed by the same architect, John Nelson. Each home is very different. They do have a great many style features that they share, so they complement not only each other, but they also complement the block on Dunton Avenue that's very much in transition. And I should mention that the home on 720 that is finished, or it's under construction, I should say, actually went through the Design Commission approval because there also was a demolition involved in that property. And it was fully approved as being in compliance with your design guidelines. Uh, exhibit number four to our appellate brief, this contains the, uh, copy of the new plans for the home that we wish to build on this lot. The second issue that the design commission has to deal with is whether or not the home that we propose is in conformity with the neighborhood. Does it meet, or I should say, does, is it compatible with the existing homes? And we would suggest objectively that the only answer is yes. This home matches the two homes that have actually been constructed, uh, and it will complement all the other homes on the block. And to say otherwise is simply objectively wrong, both at size, shape, and volume. It's a beautiful home. It's a three bedroom home that will fit just perfectly on this block if we're ever allowed to, to build it. The real issue tonight, I think, is, is the third issue, uh, that gave the commission some consternation, uh, though we're not quite sure of the exact reasons for the denial. The issue is whether or not the home that we want to demolish, the seven sixteen North Dutton that's been there for a hundred and forty years, does it have significant historical value? Does it have significant architectural value? Does it have significant aesthetic or, uh, cultural value? And we're suggesting to you tonight that it does not. You know, we know that the village ordinance doesn't give us much guidance on what these terms mean, other than your use of the word significant. And by that, you, that's a word of limitation. You designed this ordinance in order to protect property owners like my client and others from undue burdens that would have no real value of any kind. I think it's fair to say, based on the, the record that's before you from the design commission, that the issue is either, does this property have significant historical value that needs to be preserved? Or does it have significant architectural value that also requires some type of preservation? I suggest the answer to both questions is no. When we talk about the historical value of this property, yes, it's a hundred and forty years old, but it's important to remember that an old home is not necessarily historic home. There is a disconnect, I think, in, in much of the conversations taking place. You know, we know of no historical events that have ever taken place on this property. Uh, there's been no famous residents over its hundred and forty year history. Uh, there's been no historical uses of this property. You know, it didn't serve as your village's first church. It didn't serve as the village's first village hall. It didn't serve as your first store or any other first that would give it some significance. It simply is an old home that has no value. The issue, I believe, is, is does the home have a compelling story? It simply doesn't have a compelling story. It may have been a nice home at one point in time, but there is no compelling story associated with the home that would otherwise give rise to historical preservation requirements. I do note in passing that the village, uh, you've chosen not to adopt any historical presentation districts, you've not created any, nor do you have any type of historical preservation code that we would have to consider as a part of our project. The other issue that I think is, is critical tonight is whether or not this house has any significant architectural value. And architectural value is separate from historical value. You know, sometimes they can be one and the same, but not always. And I'm trading it as a, as a separate issue tonight for purposes of our appeal. You know, we don't believe that the home has any architectural value that is worth keeping. You know, it was built a hundred and forty years ago as a single family home. The layout, design are functional, but they're not unique. Exhibit five within the appellate package actually contains a floor plan of the existing home itself. It does have some exterior decorative features that probably were nice in their heyday many, many years ago, but they, they don't create any type of architectural uniqueness or some type of a special bond to the house that would require that it be preserved. And I must mention that any architectural uniqueness that this house may have had, whether a hundred and forty years ago or, or so, was lost by virtue of the, uh, various changes that have been made to the house over the years. Uh, very little was, was mentioned at the design commission of the fact that an unpermitted addition was made to this house many years ago. There's a large addition on the backside of this house that was never permitted by the village that serves as the family room for this house. Uh, no permit was ever issued for that. And the home, the addition was simply a block that was attached on to the back of the house. Uh, there was no consideration given to the existing architecture of any kind when it was planned. The other, and the other important issue that I think you need to realize is that this home, for many years prior to our purchase, actually was converted into a two flat apartment building. Without any village permission, without any permits being issued, internally, some of the site, uh, and stairway systems were redesigned. They actually built a kitchenette in order to service a second apartment within this building. Uh, all of this work to the property destroyed any unique architecture that's associated with the property itself. I think, as I've mentioned in our brief, one of the important issues when you're looking architecturally at the preservation of a building is first and foremost, does the building still exist as it was originally designed and built? And the issue before us is this home that was built in the late eighteen hundreds, does it exist today in the basic same architectural shape, size, both internally and externally? And the answer to that is simply no. This home is not the same home that was built in the late eighteen hundreds. It has been changed dramatically, and at least under the federal rules for preservation, it would never, ever qualify, uh, for any type of restoration, registration protections. Regarding the house itself, both internally and externally, it really is in poor condition. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to, to walk the property itself, uh, but the home truly is falling apart. It is probably unsafe for anyone to reside there today. Now, every structural and operational component of this house is deficient, defective, and is simply going to need to be replaced if the home is ever to be remodeled. We tried to make this point to the plan commission, or I should say to the design commission. You'll see in, in the appellate brief that we raised or provided four specific property condition reports. One from our architect that lists a tremendous number of building code violations, electrical code violations. Our own structural engineer provides a detailed report and some very telling photographs as to the deficient structures that make the home unsafe. And we also have reports from our mold testing firm and our asbestos firm that show that there's significant concentrations of both inside the house that would need to be remediated as a part of any, uh, restoration work itself. We are concerned that i- if we or anyone attempted to restore this house, the probably the biggest issue is having to rebuild the foundation. This has a brick foundation that was common back in the late eighteen hundreds. We didn't pour concrete like we do today, but the foundation is simply shot. Uh, as our expert testifies in his reports, there simply is no value left in the foundation. Some of his photographs show handyman repairs made over the years, excuse me, but those repairs have failed. The property is Boeing in many different locations. If we're to restore this house, we're going to have to replace the foundation. And the only way to replace the foundation is to physically remove the house from the foundation, which would require, as we, we discuss in more depth in the brief, we'd actually have to remove all the exterior architectural features, whatever decorative features, the balconies, stairways. Then we'd take and strap the house up and physically move it off the foundation. We'd have to keep it suspended for several weeks while we, uh, remove the existing foundation system, poured and built a new foundation system, and then hopefully we're able to put the house back on the foundation. Now, remember, this is a brick house. This is not a, a frame house. And we are seriously concerned that if any attempt was made to do what I've just described, the house would likely crumble and disintegrate once it was raised off the foundation. Unlike a frame house, and you've probably seen pictures and movies of homes that have been moved, and there is a science behind it, uh, those are usually framed structures that have a different structural component. The brick structure, especially this brick of a home that's a hundred and forty years old, we worry that this house would simply be destroyed, uh, in conjunction with any meaningful rehabilitation work. We have attached this exhibit eleven to our brief, an estimate of the rehab costs, and we have conservatively estimated them at over a million dollars. Uh, we've detailed them out there for you to take a look at. The design commission gave little, little consideration to those costs. In fact, I think one of the commissioners remarked that no matter what the cost, that's something that we should be prepared to absorb as the owner of this property, and we respectfully disagree with that conclusion. You know, before I, I conclude tonight, Mr. Mayor, I would like to touch on the two data points that your staff has raised in the report to the design commission, uh, and I'm sure will, will be noted tonight in a few minutes, once I step down. You know, there's, the first data point was the two thousand four community survey. This was a study that was either commissioned or somehow put together between the village and, and the school of the Art Institute, where it was effectively a student project to come out to Arlington Heights and to take a look at the various neighborhoods, and you have some beautiful neighborhoods, and try to get some measure of what is the quality of the buildings from an architectural standpoint and to a lesser extent, historical. Uh, the survey actually took a look at four hundred and fifty properties in your community. Uh, most of them, I understand, were actually homes. They, they conducted photographs of the homes, uh, and used that as the basis for their report. And our house does show up on that report. There's a one line item in a spreadsheet. Uh, and, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I wasn't able to put this on the screen, but I would like to get, pass this out to the board if I could.
Please. Yeah, please.
What this is, this is just two pages. It's not the whole hundred page report, but it has the one page of the spreadsheet that shows our property among many others, but it also has the, the actual definitions of, of how they score these houses. So I think it's important for us to take a look at.
You can just give me, let me pass something.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, trustees, if I could direct your attention to, to page two of the handout that I've just given you. You'll see it's a spreadsheet, and it's one of, of many that are inside this report that I referenced. And you'll see the one line that I highlighted in yellow that is our property, that in two thousand four was, was noted as being built sometime before nineteen, eighteen ninety. It has an Italian H style. It says, the survey code says E, which stands for exceptional, and ISS stands for its presence on an Illinois structural study that I'll talk about in a moment. Uh, what the report doesn't tell us is what the condition of the house was in two thousand four. It doesn't tell us who the builder or the architect was. Um, the study relies on front elevations only, which means somebody took a picture of the house and said, this is a pretty house. And it may have been back in two thousand four, that I don't know. But what I do know is that the house doesn't deserve the E designation. If I could ask you to turn to page one, the first page of the sheet I gave you. The reason I've taken this out of the, out of the report, it's page twenty-three from the main report, it gives us the definitions that were used by the students at the school in marking up the, the properties based on their review. You know, E stands for exceptional, and based on the surveyors, this is supposed to refer to properties that surveyors felt were eligible for national registration of historic places. I, as I've mentioned tonight and in the brief, the only way this property would have been eligible for registration if it was in the exact same condition that it was in the late eighteen hundreds when it was actually built. And based on all of the structural changes and additions that have been made to the house, both internally and externally, it could never meet the baseline definition, uh, for registration. Take a look at the next definition, talks about notable. It says properties that have integrity, and it's parentheses, little to minor alterations. Again, it's, it's going back to this definition that I've referred to from the federal rules as to what homes are protectable. And then we go down again to C, it says contributing. Properties that contribute to a district but have major alterations or additions, parentheses, usually reversible, close parentheses. I'm going to suggest to you tonight that if the students who actually prepared the report had a true understanding of what the actual preservation rules were, that our house, even in two thousand four, likely would have been given a C as something that may be contributing, uh, to the architectural value of the community, but clearly could never be registered because of all the changes that have been made to the house, which are not reflected in the report. The other data point that I wanted to raise is the Illinois Historical Structures Study that's noted within the, the Art Institute study and in the staff report. This apparently was some study that was undertaken between nineteen seventy-one and nineteen seventy-five throughout the state of Illinois, and apparently a host of different properties were identified that may have some either historical or architectural significance. And again, our house made it to the list. Uh, we're not sure why, uh, we have no idea what types of observations were made. In fact, I can't find a copy of the report. I served a, a request with our friends in Springfield at the Illinois State Historical Association, uh, and they checked all their records, and they've reported to me that they have no records. They do not have a copy of the study that apparently they authored. Now, and they will say that they've heard about it, but they actually do not have a copy of the report to share with me. So we really have no idea what it says or what, what, what it provides us. And I would suggest that the report, being fifty years old, if not older, really has no real relevance to us tonight. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your time tonight. You know, I can conclude in just asking that the board respectfully review and reconsider the decision of the design commission, though we know that the volunteers in that commission work hard, uh, and make every effort to do right. In this particular case, I believe that they simply made a wrong decision to attribute any special historical and/or architectural value to this house that's worthy of protection. You know, all properties have some history. Uh, we all have some architecture, our homes, our businesses, but the question is, do they rise to the level of significance that you as a, as the village have put into your ordinance? And I suggest to you tonight that none of those conditions were met. We've brought to the village a lovely new home that meets the, the guidelines, it meets the character of the neighborhood, is going to add tremendous value to your community. I think, as the mayor had mentioned at the onset, uh, when you were recognizing those, those, uh, children who had performed well in their district, you have some great schools, and people want to live in your community. And the homes that we have built on either side of this property and for this, this property itself too, is being built to order for a customer who wants his family to live and, and enjoy your community because you have so much to offer. Uh, and that's really why not only this, but other properties are being redeveloped because people want to live here, but they want to live in more modern type of structures. And that's what we would like to bring to you tonight. And with that, I'm going to ask that you do reverse the decision of the, uh, design commission, uh, grant the demolition permit, and approve our construction of the plan that we've attached as exhibit four. Mr. Mayor, that, that concludes my remarks. The, my, the president, Vince Delgagio of, of Mastercraft Builders, would like a moment to, to also make a few remarks with your consent. Thank you, sir.
Just give us your name if you would, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Vince Delgagio, and I am the owner of Mastercraft Builders. Uh, I've been in this business over forty years, uh, and have owned Mastercraft Builders over twenty years. To assure the board that our company is not in the business of tearing down homes and we, we build all kinds of products. Um, this particular product was part of a group that, uh, was bought, we bought the empty lots. We didn't want that particular product. An investor bought that product, found out there was a lot of issues with the actual, uh, he had put renters in there, and they were having problems with different issues, um, and approached us to purchase it from him, and it made sense for us because we were already there. Um, when we purchased it, our first intentions were to, um, look at it, to see if we could revitalize it and so on, um, because that's our business. Um, with all the new regulations and so on, sometimes it's better to build or to fix old than it is to build new. Um, however, we hired all of our professionals to give us estimates and so on and coordinate what it would take after I started to visualize what we really had, and came to the conclusion that it couldn't be saved. There was too much going on for what we were paying for it and, and what we had to do for it to get our return on our money. Um, and then we were approached by some client to design a home for them on that particular lot, and that's when we approached the zoning, and that's when we found out the first time that this was apparently allocated as a historical. In our researches of everything else, that we did title searches and so on. In our researches of everything else, that we did title searches and so on, this property never came up as a landmark, as a tagged. And we have done significant work in a lot of historical homes, even in Barrington. We just finished one in downtown Barrington, where actually we purchased one three doors down from this particular house that is about the same, well, it's about 100 years old. And we are in the process of rehabbing that one. The difference with that one is that it was taken care of. It was upgraded as time went by, and that's unfortunate. The individual that had it ran into an accident and couldn't keep it up anymore and was willing to give it up. And we took it over, and we are in the process now of rejuvenating that particular home on three doors down. We're also doing one in Elmhurst, which is about 96 years old, that was owned by one family, three generations, immaculate, immaculate house that basically just needed some tender loving care and some work. These are older homes, doesn't mean you tear them down, if they have been taken care of. I mean, the average home in the Midwest, national statistics, is the life expectancy of a home in the Midwest is about 75 years, if it's been taken care of. This particular home hasn't seen anything, anything done to it, probably since the 70s. I mean, all of these features that everybody thinks that they're great on the outside are all held together with paint. If you poke your finger through it, if you probe it, if you test it, it's all, it just disintegrates in your hand and falls apart. I mean, if you strip all of those away, you basically have a brick box with a gable roof. That's all. And the way the house is positioned right now, the determination was, we couldn't even work with what we have because the way the house was placed was so far over to one side of the lot line that the neighbor of the house that we built, if they put a fence up, there's barely 24 inches to walk to the side to get to their side entrance, which is useless. You take that side entrance away, there's nothing left. We take off the back addition that was not permitted, we take one-third of the house off, we're stuck with one small little box, basically. We're not going to put a million, a million 130 plus the cost of the property into something that I can't even get a return on, or sell it to someone because it's basically good for two people at this point. There's basically three rooms on the first floor. The basement floods, the foundation is caving in. Anyway, this is how we came to the conclusion that we needed to tear it down. It was never really our intention to tear it down to start with because it made sense for us to do it until we got into it. Now that we have what we have, it is not habitable. It is, the renter that was in there, after we took it, we asked him to leave because we didn't want the responsibility of the mold, the asbestos, the basement, the foundation collapsing, and there's no garage because the garage used to be on a property that we owned, an empty lot that we tore down. If you were to put, take the house now, you can't even put a garage because between the FAR, between the permious coverage, there's no room. There's no place to put a garage. So the house would have no garage in the back, and we would have to basically take one-third of the back off, which is not even, that doesn't even, is not even part of the original house. It's just a, which has been sitting on the ground level. When it was done, it was done without a permit, but after we concluded that, we researched, and it was set right on the ground. The foundation is just sitting on the ground and is detaching itself about four inches away from the building right now. So if you go in the house, there's four inches of space between the house and that addition right now. So it's not a vital product for us to work with, unlike the one that we're doing three doors down, that that was taken care of and so on and so forth, and it has some residual value. And that house is 113 years old, but it's had a few additions, but done properly, not like this particular one. So this is why we're here to say, hey, you know, we need to put a new house there, and it looks great from the street. It's a great picture. You stand on the curb, or you stand on the sidewalk, or you stand across the street, and you look at it, it looks great. But you don't want to live in there, so we can't rent it, we can't sell it the way it is. What other choice do we have? I'm not putting a million 130 into something plus the land that I'm buying or that I bought. I mean, I could build a new house for that. So this is why we are here tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Deligio.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anything else from the appellant? Mr. Pranderski, anything else?
Nothing else, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would ask you procedurally, is that...
Well, we're going to have a staff presentation, and then the board will discuss, and then we'll go to the audience, so.
Well, I guess the question is if you're going to have other public comment, which I'm sure you will.
Why don't you come forward, if you would?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The procedural inquiry is, I know that staff will make a presentation, and then I take it you'll open it up for some public comments as well.
Well, we're going to have the board discussion, at least preliminary discussion first.
Okay. Fair enough. Well, I just, the question was just if you do open it up for public conversation, which obviously is your decision, is just that we may have a few moments at the end to respond to any of the public statements. Otherwise, you know, we were, otherwise we've concluded. We appreciate your time tonight.
Sure. Thank you. All right. Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is just walk through the staff report that was in the packet and that was presented to the Design Commission, starting with the code requirements of Chapter 28, 13.10. This is the appeal provisions. So if a project is denied by the Design Commission, the applicant has the opportunity to appeal, submit an appeal within 30 days of receiving that notice of denial, which the applicant has done. And then the village board at a regular meeting, which is tonight, can either agree with the Design Commission's decision, or can overrule or modify the decision of the Design Commission, and then direct the issuance of appropriate permits. The process, you know, is in the packet, and we've kind of talked about that a little bit. But the application for the appeal, we've received that. We did require that notice be put on the property of this meeting, so similar to what we require with Design Commission. So that notice was placed up no less than 15 days and no more than 30 days prior to tonight's meeting. So the property is on Dunton Avenue. It's in a historic Arlington neighborhood. It's between Vine and Hawthorne on the west side of the street. As you can see from this aerial, it used to be sit on five lots. There were vacant lots to the south and vacant lots to the north. You can just see, if I can get the cursor working here, the garage associated with the house in question was on this lot. And in 2020, these lots were requested by the current applicant for subdivision, and that subdivision was approved, and then the Design Commission approved the home that was built. The two properties to the north, after a code change in 2021, became buildable, and the petitioner submitted their Design Commission application for that home. That was the home that was subject to the Zoning Board of Appeals' review last month relative to building height, which ultimately was approved, and that's under construction. So this is the house, images of the house, you know, from the street. You can see it's an Italianate-style architecture as described in the Art Institute report. It's got a lot of ornate detailing and, you know, had, used to have a very nice presence on the lot because it had grans around it. It still has a nice presence to the street and the other historic homes along the property. These are all provisions that are in the staff report. I just want to kind of walk through these code provisions and the reasoning behind staff's recommendation, and then ultimately, the Design Commission's recommendation. So Chapter 28, that's a zoning ordinance. It has an intent and purpose section that talks about what the intent and purpose of the zoning code is, which is to protect the public health, safety, morals, and comfort and welfare of the people in the community, to divide the property into appropriate zoning districts, and to protect the character and stability of residential areas within the village that promotes an orderly and beneficial development of such areas. And then in the same section, same code, but Section 13.2 talks about the design review. So these are the procedures and criteria that the Design Commission looks at when there is a request for a demolition permit. So a demolition permit can only be issued in residential or B5 districts after Design Commission has reviewed and approved a redevelopment plan. And this was set forth in, as a result of the teardown task force that took place in 2004 and 2005 in efforts to preserve and protect residential neighborhoods from the excessive teardowns that were occurring at the time, and to have some review and make sure properties were reviewed properly and that there were some checks and balances relative to the character of the neighborhood. And so the Design Commission is required to look at the development plan, look at the demolition, the timeframe, the redevelopment plan, including verifying whether the proposed redevelopment is in character with the neighborhood and meets the criteria of the design guidelines, and whether the proposed redevelopment, that it, making sure that it does not adversely affect the neighborhood, and both staff and the Design Commission felt the teardown and the new home proposed would adversely affect the neighborhood. And Section 13.7 is the really critical part of the review here. So prior to the Design Commission issuing a certificate of approval, there are three elements that the Design Commission needs to find. First, that the appellant plans achieve the purpose and intent of the Design Commission, and both staff and the Design Commission felt that they did not. Second, that the proposed design is compatible with the character of the neighboring buildings contributing to a favorable environment in the village. And again, both staff and the Design Commission felt that that had not been met. And then thirdly, that the existing properties or structures are determined to not have a significant architectural, historic, aesthetic, or cultural value. And again, both staff and the Design Commission felt that the existing structure does have those values and does have significant architectural, historic, and aesthetic and cultural value in the neighborhood. The 2004 report, this is a little extract of it. The area circled, that's the approximate location of the home at 716 Dunton. So Area A is basically Dunton Avenue from Euclid up to Oakton, and based upon that report, it has a predominance of homes that are noted as exceptional, notable, or contributing value to the community. Sometimes it's not one home on its own, it's the value of the block and the streets and the neighborhood. And historic and conservation districts can be handled in a number of different ways as the National Register, which has very stringent rules and regulations. And then there can be local rules and regulations with restrictions, and there can also be designated districts. So this particular home is also listed on the State of Illinois Historic Survey that the applicant also referenced. And then there's the Arlington Heights Comprehensive Plan, so that was amended and completely rewritten in 2015. Chapter 6 talks about historic preservation fairly extensively, and there are a couple of goals and policies that are outlined here. The first one is to preserve the physical resources of historic value, which amplify, you know, the heritage of Arlington Heights. And it talks about, the plan talks about reviewing these criteria when there's a specific land use petition. So in this case, the Design Commission petitioned to tear down the home and build a new home. And then it talks about following these criteria, A, B, and C. So A, the structures that exhibit high-quality architecture reminiscent of the past from a design point of view, structures that exhibit unusual or distinctive design and have architectural interest in the environment or the, you know, in the adjacent area, and then land uses that are unique by virtue of the location or distinctive characteristics or historical association. And then the second goal is to preserve and protect existing and future residential neighborhoods with policies to preserve and renovate housing of historic and aesthetic value, and to prepare realistic plans in and around the downtown with historic properties. And this is just north of the downtown. And then there's the single-family design guidelines, and I think Pages 3 or 4 in those design guidelines talk about the criteria for the Design Commission to look at certain projects, and then the factors and characteristics that go into their evaluation, which is at the bottom, and I won't read all of these. Also in the design guidelines is a checklist for petitioners to do a survey of the neighborhood, to look at the character of the homes and the buildings in the neighborhood, and as they develop their design. So wrapping it up, the analysis is contained in Pages 3, 4, and 5, I think, of the staff report. This is not everything here, but this just kind of talks about those sections of the code, the design guidelines, and the single-family guidelines that staff and the Design Commission based their opinion on. And more specifically, Section 13.7, Item 1, that the applicant's plans do not achieve the purpose and intent of the design guidelines. Section 2, that the design is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood of buildings. And then third, that the existing property does have significant architectural, historic, and aesthetic and cultural value and should be preserved. So the Design Commission unanimously voted to recommend denial of this petition, and I know I've walked through that fairly quickly. All the materials are in your packet, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Well, we'll go to the board at this time. Let me just say preliminarily that we are all, and the board, very, very familiar with this property and the block that, and the neighborhood that this property is on. It's on the parade route, Fourth of July Parade Route, and I, if anyone who's lived in this community for a period of years has been by this home hundreds, if not thousands of times, I know I have. And so we're very, very familiar with this property and this neighborhood, and so just rest assured that we certainly understand and appreciate the issues from both sides. And so we'll be sensitive to that as we go forward. Let me just also say that this doesn't happen very often, where we have somebody appealing a decision of one of our boards or commissions. And so I just, from my perspective, I believe the Design Commission is entitled to deference and great respect for the work that they do. I believe that they always follow their guidelines and direction from this village board and try to stay within our codes and those guidelines, and so I very much appreciate their work. So with those preliminary comments, let me just go to the board, and I'll call first on Trustee Baldino.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to make an emotion to deny the appeal of the Design Commission denial for the proposed demolition of the existing single-family residence located at 716 North Dunton Avenue and the construction of a new single-family home.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion to...
Deny the appeal of the Design Commission denial.
Okay. And who was the second? Trustee Tenalia. Right. Further comments from the board or questions? Trustee Tenalia.
Well, the attorney did a, it was a valiant effort, I think, and he spoke eloquently about all of the petitioner's thoughts and concerns, but there are just too many things here on the table that I think were ignored in his presentation. And I think Charles did a great job with wrapping up a lot of the specifics and details in very, very carefully worded language that's in our design guidelines. This is not something that we run into often. As Mayor pointed out, this is a very unusual case. While we don't have a historic preservation committee, let's say, in our town here, we have a lot of beautiful, old historic homes that any one of which, if it were to be torn down, would be a horrible loss to our, our character of our community, the quality of our life. It's not, this is, you know, attorneys can speak and say things in a way that makes sense to them. A developer can speak and justify and make sense so that it works for them. Architects, same thing. There's, all architects can look at things differently and have different opinions. But this is cultural. This is the community. This is what Arlington Heights is. You don't have to love it. You don't have to even understand it. But if you're going to invest in Arlington Heights, and if you're going to take a chance about buying some empty lots and then purchasing another home like this from another investor, my suspicion would be you better get educated really fast before you do that, because you might end up with this kind of an outcome. And it's a shame. It is really, really difficult. I feel terrible for someone who runs into this kind of a scenario, but this is just a fact. This is who we are. This is part of who Arlington Heights is. And I, I don't want to see this house torn down for any reason. And I, I don't want to see this house torn down for any reason. Charles, just really quickly, did our staff have conversations with this developer early on before they bought the property? Was there any communication that might suggest, hey, you know, we're thinking about buying this house, is there any concern here? Was there anything that happened back then?
Yes, Trustee Tenalia. Steve Hatzinger, he's the liaison to the design commission and also a licensed architect. So, he had a verbal conversation on May twenty-third last year with the builder, and then
Can I interrupt you? Did they own the property at that point, or no?
My understanding is when they filed their application for design commission, which is after that, they were a contract purchaser.
After May twenty-third?
Yes, and even on August twenty-third last year, after it was clear, Steve Hatzinger got another phone call from the builder indicating they were getting ready to prepare plans, he then sent a letter to them expressing and advising them that, you know, staff had concerns and would not support, you know, the teardown of the home. That letter, I think, is on the novice agenda item. And then, I don't know the exact date of when they made their application for design commission, but it was after that correspondence was sent to them. And as part of the application, our understanding is they were the contract purchaser at that time. It sounds like they have now owned the property, we were not aware of that until this evening.
Oh, okay. So, it's a ball rolling down the hill here, and unfortunately, we, it's running into a brick wall. This is something that, if you're gonna buy something like this in our town like this, I would guess it makes sense to just get really educated on it. And your comments are that this information was shared to this developer early on, in May, in August?
May verbally and in August in writing.
Okay.
And to make it clear, Trustee Tenalia, prior to when the purchase was made.
That's what I'm getting at, right? That's why I think the conclusion is here. So, I don't really have, I mean, I could go on and on and on, I'm gonna skip boring you all with those details, but that's my initial thought, that's why I seconded the motion, and I'm anxious to hear what some of the residents have to say as well.
Trustee LeVette.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank Trustee Tenalia for eloquently speaking his concerns about demolishing this house. And I'd like to speak to the issue of, in section thirteen point seven, and the issuance of a certificate of approval, and whether a property is determined not to have significant architectural, historical, aesthetic, or cultural value. I don't, I, the petitioner's attorney kept saying that there's nothing significant about this, nothing historical about this, but this is our history, this is Arlington Heights' history. And I don't believe that, that to be significant, there has to be, we have to say George Washington slept here. I think that common people make history too, regular people, for investing in their community and building it up. And that is why I think this does meet those criteria of being, that it is significant. I think that you have to realize that not, most, not, even the other historical houses in Arlington Heights that we all admire so much, they don't have a George Washington slept here either kind of situation. And I don't mean to make light of any of this, but I guess that's, that's how I look at it, is our history is significant to us, it's significant to this community, and that's why I do not want to see this property tear down. And finally, I can't help but think of the children's book, The Little House. And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, it was a little house in the country, I think the book was written in the nineteen forties or maybe a little earlier, little house in the country, lot, a lot of land, and suddenly, everything grew up around it. And I feel like, in this particular case, the little house, the one that we are talking about now, suddenly has these other houses around it where there wasn't one before, which makes, why I think of that particular story. But I am in support of the motion.
Trustee Grassi.
Thank you. I wanted to make two comments, and then, I'd like to speak a little bit to the standards in thirteen point seven, so if we could pull that up after. But I first wanted to comment, I love the character of old homes. I've lived in three old homes in my entire life, a nineteen twenty home, a nineteen fifty home, and right now, I'm in a nineteen fifty-eight home, two-story in Arlington Heights. I love the wood floors in every room, the plaster walls, I have a few cracks here and there, but it's unique, it is, has, full of character, and I love it. And I understand there are challenges that come with older homes and maintaining, but I love the character, and that is something that has great historical significance for me. The other comment I wanted to make is, is the attorney for the petitioner did mention that there were no firsts. And I don't remember, I heard from a couple of different people, that this home may have had one of the first indoor toilets, commodes, that was actually wooden and may still be in place. So, I think that might be a significant first that is of interest to me. But if we may go back to the thirteen point seven standards, I just wanted to speak to a few in there that, my comments are going to explain why I have not been persuaded to approve this demolishing. In number two, talking about the proposed design is compatible with the character of neighboring buildings contributing to a favorable environment to the village, the attorney mentioned how the new homes complement each other and the plot, but I think part of that includes complementing the other historic homes and areas in the building. And I did not hear that was mentioned. So, I'm not quite sure if I believe standard two was fully met, how I am understanding it. And number three is the big one for me, as with the other trustees, as they mentioned, just that the structure is determined not to have significant architectural, historical, aesthetic, or cultural value. And the fact that students collected data in some of these studies is of no concern to me. I come from a family of higher learning and education where it's usually the students who do collect all the data for research and various reports that are done. So, the fact that students collected data is not a concern for me on the importance or the value or the accuracy of the data collected. But I have received so many emails from residents in the area speaking to the cultural, historical, aesthetic value. As children, they remember walking by this home, they, story after story about what it has meant to them throughout their life. When they moved in, they always hoped to buy the home, or it was just a significant part of what they knew of their neighborhood. And I have heard so many comments that speak to the aesthetic and cultural value for our community, for the neighbors. And my understanding is from this set of standards, that only one standard needs to be met for us, and I think more than one has been met, in my understanding. And I've heard points from our staff and from all the residents that actually support all four of the values in number three. And I thank you for doing business with the other buildings and homes in our community, but this one has significant value for me to go along with the motion.
Okay, anybody else? Trustee Schreiber.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, well said by all my colleagues, and I certainly don't want to repeat what they said. Charles, I do have one question, and certainly listening to the petitioner, I understand their thoughts on this property. But has anybody from the village, because we certainly haven't had the opportunity to really look at the house and look at the foundation and the inside and kind of concur with what we're hearing tonight as far as the home itself, the condition of it?
No, we did ask the building department to go out and take a look at it, you know, when there were some complaints about how the building was being kept and secure, you know, whether it was secure and sealed up and, you know, heat on the building, they couldn't get access to the building, so they could only do an exterior observation. But no, we have not done that, and, you know, you'd probably have to have an independent structural engineer or architect, you know, do that analysis, really.
Okay. And I do have a question just of the mastercraft owner, if you could maybe come forward. I'm just trying to understand the timeline here, and Trustee Tenalia was going through that, but how long have you physically owned the property now?
I'm not sure the exact date, but
I mean, has it been two years, or?
December two thousand and eighteen.
So, you've owned the property since two thousand and eighteen?
Oh, ma'am, ma'am, if you're gonna speak, you have to come forward.
Yeah. Sorry, I wasn't sure of the date for sure.
And just give us your name, please.
Kathleen Deligio.
What was it?
Kathleen Deligio. We went in with an investor that we know, the whole entire parcel, and we bought it from Connie Coghlan, which was in a, you know, was estate sale. And at that time, we asked her point-blank if this was historical, because we did our research on this. And she said no, and it needs to be torn down, just because they'd never done anything to the home. So, that's why we proceeded in doing this, and then, of course, COVID hit.
Right.
So, you know, we've kind of had to slow everything down.
Okay. Well, no, my real question was, how long have you owned it? So, about two thousand and eighteen?
Yes.
And, and your attorney said that the house is unsafe, there's mold, bunch of other things?
You have all of those reports in there.
Yeah, I do. When was the tenant asked to move out?
Last year, when we decided to start building seven twenty.
Okay.
Because we knocked down the garage too, and they were using that garage
Okay.
as part of their lease. And we felt that, you know, why disturb them while we're trying to do this, and we needed the space to, you know, to get the equipment and so forth, because it's, they're only fifty-foot lots.
And you just determined recently that it was unsafe? You didn't know that?
No, we knew when we told them, you know, when they, we asked them not to extend their lease.
So, all those, all those years they were living in there?
They were living after we fixed it up, when we purchased it. We had to go in and take out the kitchen that they did, because they have a
It was a two-flat.
Two-flat situation.
Kitchen upstairs.
Or they had, I guess, the grandparent, the older person upstairs, and then downstairs, somebody else lived.
And no mold or unsafe conditions were noted back then when they were living there?
No, because we, at that time, we were thinking that we were gonna rehab it. And then, we did an extensive study when we hired the professionals to come in and started compiling everything that needed to be done.
Yeah.
And once we found out, it said it was time for them to go, because we didn't want the liability and so on with them. Plus, we were disrupting from the other building they were building next door, taking the garage down, and it just didn't make any sense for them to stay there, you know? Plus, then after that, we started to find out the foundation and this and that and asbestos and, you know, and we knew there were some issues, because the renter was called, oh, the heating is a problem, or the water's coming through the basement walls and, you know, and so on. But, you know, older homes, they have those kind of issues, you know? But once we started to dig into it and got the professionals out there to start evaluating what it would take to put it where it needed to be, and we started getting all of the numbers together, we said, this is not gonna work, this is, this is
You can't sell a house with
There's not much there, we can't, we can't do anything with it right now, it's just gonna sit. There's nothing we can do, we can't rent it, we can't sell it because of all the issues, we can't rent it because it's unsafe, and we can't tear it down.
If it doesn't get approved.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
And we do have a structural also from Alter Engineering regarding the foundation.
Yeah, you have a whole packet, so.
Thank you.
All right, who else? Trustee Dymington.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to share a little bit about what I read from the School of the Art Institute of Chicago, their report, because I felt like it was minimized in the discussion that the petitioner brought up today, as well as in the appeal letter. In the appeal letter, it says that art students were recruited to traverse the village in an effort to identify its diverse housing stock. And so, when I read the report, I learned that this, the School of the Art Institute has a historic preservation program, they offer a master's degree in that, and this was a graduate-level, full semester class, where fifteen students with a diverse background in architecture, architecture history, art history, archaeology, interior design, and law. They spent the whole semester, they developed an architectural-style guide for Arlington Heights. They spent several weeks of field study work, they looked, they did research by looking into village building permits, historic maps, census records, newspapers, books. They used the Arlington Historical Society, the library, and the building department for their research, and it was two months of intense field research. So, I do support the staff and the design commission, their recommendation to deny this. I think that demolition and redevelopment of this property would have an adverse effect on the neighborhood due to the loss of this historic home. I think that the village board has a responsibility to protect this home. I also wanted to mention that the design commission, they did say that the home, the proposed home was, in their minutes, they said that it doesn't relate to the homes on either side, that it was quite massive in scale, and it was generic. So, I think for those reasons, I don't, I support the motion to deny the proposal.
Trustee Baldino.
Thank you, Mayor. In all fairness to the petitioner, until late this afternoon, I waffled back and forth on this issue, until I asked Randy a question that he couldn't answer. And my question was, how many Italianate homes do we have in Arlington Heights? The answer, which I found out, is three. One of which was classified architecturally as contributing, so not that big a deal. The other one was classified not only as exceptional, but it has a bicentennial plaque on it, which clearly indicates to me that this style of architecture in the village of Arlington Heights, while not unique to this property, is rare and historically significant. And that is what swayed me to make the motion that I did this evening. I had a lot more comments to make, but I'm aware that there are a lot of folks that want to speak tonight, and so, I'm going to stop it there and just thank the mayor.
Okay, Trustee Bertucci.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of what I've heard, and I also agree with the rest of the board members. I have sat on the Historical Society Board in the past, I do understand this home, although I do understand the petitioner's position, and as Trustee Tenalia said, it's, you know, it's a risk that you take when you embark on something like this. And reading all the material, I still remember reading where the design commissioner, Ted Eckert, who happens to be an architect, said, I don't think I could sleep at night if I put myself in a position and allowed this home to be torn down. As a past Historical Society member, or board member, I should say, I'm still a member, but I too probably would have a tough time sleeping if I allowed this to be torn down. I just hope that we could find the right group or person or someone who can, for lack of better words, rescue this home and bring it back to its luster and bring it back to the condition that we hope to see it as, everybody in this room, I think, hopes to see it as, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, anybody else? Trustee Charlie.
Just real quick, you know, I just want to make sure that I understand it, to me, it's all about thirteen point seven C. It's about the architectural, historical, aesthetic, and cultural value of it. A and B are about the plans for the house, which can be changed. So, I just think this is about the historical, aesthetic, cultural value of the existing house, to me. And that's why I'm gonna be voting in favor of the motion. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Well, let me just add my comments before we go to the audience. I very much appreciated the brief, the appellate brief, Mr. Prandurski, I thought you did an excellent job in drafting it. It made a compelling argument, a persuasive argument, but I do have to disagree with at least one point, and that is your assertion And that is your assertion that this home does not tell a compelling story. And so, I, I do feel that it, it really does tell a compelling story for a lot of the reasons that trustee Lebeds indicated. Uh, according to this survey of thirty-eight homes that are architecturally significant in town, this is one of only eleven that were built prior to eighteen ninety. And to me, that's not only historically significant, but compelling. And it tells a, a very great, compelling, uh, story of the many individuals who lived in that home for a hundred and forty years. And it's something that I wanna preserve, not just in this neighborhood, but in this community. And so, if we lose, uh, you know, one of these historically significant homes, I think it's, it's really doing a disservice to not just this neighborhood, but this community. And so, uh, I do, uh, believe that, uh, thirteen point seven C is important, but thirteen point seven B is important as well. I do think this would definitely alter the character of the neighborhood if this home were to be torn down. And, and certainly, I think it, uh, maintaining this home would be consistent with our design guidelines as well. So, those are my comments, and with that, I, I do wanna go to the audience. And I, you do have three minutes, I do have a number of blue cards, but hopefully, uh, the discussion that we've had thus far will, uh, will, uh, allow you to tailor your comments, uh, at this point, uh, given the hour that we're at this evening. But I don't wanna restrict anybody from, um, making the comments that they wanna make this evening. But I just wanna just, um, make sure that you have the opportunity not to take three minutes. So, with that, I will, um, I will, uh, start by calling on Mary Ann Crosby Anderson, and then on deck is Kurt Scudland.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hayes and, and the village trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and for all your hard work on behalf of our constituents and our beautiful community. My name is Mary Ann Crosby Anderson. I live at seven twenty-eight North Dunton. On the photo that you had up there, I'm three, three houses north of the subject property. I've lived in Arlington Heights for thirty-seven years, and I am here tonight to ask you to uphold the design commission's October tenth unanimous decision to deny the demolition of the Italianate at seven sixteen North Dunton. Your design commission members are architectural experts. Chosen and vetted by the board and their staff liaison, Steve Housinger represents the village in that position because of his expertise in architecture, design, and sustainable con- construction. These folks were placed in the position by you, the board, to do a job, and I believe they take the responsibilities very seriously. And as already been stated, uh, municipal code thirteen point two states a proposed demolition in residential zoning districts requires a design review to determine and evaluate whether the demolition and subsequent redevelopment is in character with the neighborhood and does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Also, thirteen point seven, particularly C, uh, states that the design commission has the authority to deny demolition. They have the authority to deny demolition of an existing property if they determine the home has those values that you've already mentioned several times. These provisions have been in the municipal code for more than twenty years, and they were revised in twenty eighteen. The municipal code sets limits on what can be done to a property. As in the meeting minutes from October tenth, you see the full reasoning of their unanimous decision from the School of the, of the twenty-two thousand four School of the Art Institute study, to the Illinois Structural Survey, to those two municipal codes, to the comprehensive plan, which has all been discussed, uh, to the opinion of village staff, to, and most importantly, all the public comments that were expressed that night. There were probably fifty or sixty people in the audience that night. And the comments all validated that, to those people, the home's significant architectural, historical, aesthetic, and cultural value. And there is nothing in the packet that you got that contains any new evidence or is any different than what the design review has already, the di- design commission has already reviewed. I can't stress with you enough that your experts made this decision. And it was fully, and it is fully supported by the laws and plans the village has in place. That this, this decision was incredible. It was a source of great pride for me and many people in our neighborhood, and a source of pride in our government. Please don't overturn the design commission's decision to deny the demolition of seven sixteen. Please save seven sixteen. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Next is Kurt Scudland, and then Vivian Menzies.
Hello, my name is Kurt Scudland. I'm an architect. I live on the same block, uh, as the house at seven sixteen North Dunton. As a licensed architect, I've spent my entire thirty-five career adapting existing houses to modern lifestyles. I'm used to quickly evaluating what can be done with a house. As the studio director at my firm, it's my responsibility to lead survey teams to document conditions of existing homes in order to assess them for rehab. My firm considers me an expert at this. I also took the opportunity to survey seven sixteen Dunton when it was open to the public during the estate sale just before the developer bought the house. Given this experience, I feel qualified to comment on the condition and potential of this house. For the developer to say that the existing house cannot be reasonably modernized to create the enlarged spaces and desirable amenities is baseless. I do this work every day, and I'm familiar with the design and layout of this house. Yes, the interior is currently a series of small rooms, but I know the house can be easily adapted to more modern plan. Actually, its design, more than most, lends itself to that. It's special. As a part of their appeal, the developers submitted reports from consultants they hired to cond- to document the condition of the house. The issues they cite are nothing unusual or surprising. They are very common, and what I would expect to find in a home that I regularly survey. Despite the claims, the exterior is especially well-designed and is overall in excellent shape. If properly restored and maintained, there's nothing to prevent this house from being here for another hundred and fifty years. The house has a level of detail that sets it apart and cannot be replicated in the modern homes that are being around it, being built around it. I think it's safe to say that nothing like it will be built again. I am not aware of another home in Arlington Heights that has such integrity and displays such quality, detail, and style. This house is irreplaceable. They only built this type of Italian, Italianate picturesque movement-style house during the short thirty-year period starting just before the Civil War, which was about when our village was founded. Maybe you can't tell exactly why, but that's why, when you walk past, you know it's significant and historic. I believe we are on the verge of losing all the historic fabric that remains in our community and contributes to the unique character of Arlington Heights. If this house does not qualify as having significant architectural, historical, aesthetic, or cultural value, then I do not know what does. It's possible to rationalize the demolition ordinance should never be applied, and there's nothing the village, in the village, that qualifies for preservation. But if we don't save this house, that's what we're saying, and we might as well admit it. I ask you to deny this application for de- demolition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scudland. Next is Vivian Menzies, and then Kendra Parzen.
Hello, um, Vivian Menzies, two twelve West Fremont. I'm here really just to support the decision of the design commission regarding seven sixteen North Dunton. The commissioners on the design commission are experts. They've been appointed and approved by the village board. They have so many years of professional expertise in architecture and design. Their decision was unanimous, and it was noteworthy because of that, and because they also usually do favor demolition. The fact that they voted unanimously in this case speaks to the uniqueness and the importance of this home. Secondly, my husband and I have lived in a hundred and fifty-year-old home for almost, well, almost fifty years. We have almost fifty years' worth of experience in restoring and living in an old house. And to me, to claim that this house would need over a million dollars' worth in restoration is ridiculous. To say that they would need to lift up the house and rela- replace the foundation is ridiculous. Most of us in homes of this vintage choose to live with an old foundation that leaks from time to time, and the water runs to the drain. We don't have such modern things as sump pumps like houses have now. We come to accept that we will never have a finished basement, we have a cellar. Those of us who buy older homes spend a lot of money and a lot of time working on our old homes, and it's because we love them. It literally is a labor of love. We may start out with a grand plan of all that we will do in a year, and it quickly becomes a five-year plan, and then a twenty-year plan, and more. And I believe that restoration of seven sixteen is feasible for a homeowner, but it may not be so for a developer. Please give this house a chance to be brought back to its former glory by someone who loves it versus allowing demolition to meet the bottom line of a developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Viv. Next is, no, no, no applause, please. Uh, Kendra Parzen, and then Susan Scudland.
Good evening. My name's Kendra Parzen. I am the advocacy manager for Landmarks Illinois. And we are a statewide nonprofit organization, helping people save the historic places that are important to their communities. Uh, I'm also a fully qualified architectural historian, according to the U.S. Secretary of the Interior standards for that profession. I strongly oppose the appeal before you this evening to demolish the historic house at seven sixteen North Dunton. Um, and I became aware of this application, uh, through local advocates from Arlington Heights who reached out to my organization for support, because they find this building is so significant to the Arlington Heights community. Um, we've already heard many excellent comments this evening that I will endeavor not to repeat. But I did, uh, still want to specifically respond, um, to the applicant's assertion that seven sixteen has no significant architectural or historical value. Um, you already heard plenty about the School of the Art Institute survey, and that only thirty-eight properties in that survey received the exceptional designation. Uh, seven sixteen, I'd just like to reiterate, is a beautiful and intact example of the Italianate style and was one of those properties. It is a common and accepted practice in historic preservation to determine that a building is significant based on being an outstanding example of its type, which I believe is what we have in this case, uh, on top of its community significance. As I, uh, oh, excuse me, the applicant's attorney also earlier referenced, um, the National Register of Historic Places, uh, as, as did staff, as standards for evaluating, uh, the historic significance of a property. Um, as I believe has been provided to you all, my understanding is that the State Historic Preservation Office has also issued an opinion that seven sixteen should be evaluated for the National Register. Lastly, I can offer my own expert opinion that, based on a visual analysis of the exterior, seven sixteen North Dunton today retains sufficient material integrity to communicate its historic and architectural value. And contrary to the claim of the applicant, previous changes have not eliminated that ability. Um, I'd also like to briefly touch on, uh, the assertion that the house is too deteriorated to remain standing. Kurt's, uh, has already offered his expert opinion, um, that that's not the case. Uh, however, I wanted to come back to an earlier question, um, about, uh, additional assessment. Should the board believe that additional information about that conditions is warranted? Uh, my organization can provide a list of engineers and architects specifically qualified in the assessment of historic, uh, buildings that can provide an opinion as to whether it is truly unsalvageable. Though, in conclusion, I would also like to encourage the board to uphold the design commission's decision so that this architectural gem can continue to contribute to the character of the Arlington Heights community. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thanks, Kendra. Next is Susan Scudland, and then Tom Gaynor.
Thank you, trustees. My name is Susan Scudland, and I live at seven sixteen North Vale. Um, I also ask the trustees to uphold the decision of the design committee and to deny this appeal. As Kendra stated, you know, um, she talked about the National Registry, and I'm a good follow-up to her, because that's actually what I wanted to discuss with you as well. It was ve- you know, developer is very clear that he thought it would, I think the words were, never, ever meet the criteria. And, um, provided information, you know, on how to apply to, uh, find out if you do meet the, the criteria on that. And in Illinois, the process is to first get, uh, and a, an opinion from the Illinois State, um, historical... Excuse me, the Illinois State, um... Okay, I deleted the name of it. So it's the Illinois State Preservation Group, um, the State Historic Preservation Office, excuse me, in Springfield. So, you don't have to be the property owner to do that. It's an application that you can fill out, as long as you can provide photos of it, um, a layout of it, some information about the history of the property. So, the Hannah Preservation Commission did that, and in fact, we received a positive opinion from, um, the State Historical Preservation Office that they felt this property would meet the criteria for the National Registry. And I know everyone was sent copies of this by email over the weekend, along with thousands of other emails that you got over the weekend. So I do have copies of that. Um, and as you look at that, uh, what it clearly states is that their opinion is that this property at seven sixteen North Dunton meets the criteria for National Registry based on C, which is that the pop- property embodies distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction, or represents the work of a master, or possesses high artistic values, or represents a distinguished entity, even if those components lack individual distinction. So it, they have determined it meets that criteria. The area of significance in this opinion is in architecture. So I strongly feel that the design commission made the right choice. It's supported by many things, as Mary Ann had, uh, commented tonight, but also the National Register, which is, you know, as the, uh, petitioner had stated, the criteria that they place stock in. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Susan. Next is Tom Gaynor, and then Greg Menzies.
Hi, greetings, Mayor Hayes and trustees. I'm gonna take up Tom on his, uh, guidance to be quick and cut many, uh, many sections. So, I'm Tom Gaynor, I live at two oh eight West Fremont with my wife Sue. Uh, two oh eight West Fremont was a prior home of Police Chief Scoob. So that's a historic tidbit for tonight. Um, I'm currently serving as the Hannah Board President. Um, and there are six hundred and twenty-five households in Hannah, and you see many of the neighbors are here tonight. Um, and I can't speak for them, but I can speak on behalf of the board, who is unanimous in their, uh, support of the design commission's decision to spare seven sixteen North Dunton. So I just wanted to share with that, that, uh, we've, we've got, uh, a big consensus within the organization, uh, leadership. The decision, as we've talked about, is a hundred percent compliant with the way the village says we do business. It's per the ordinance, it's per the study, per the comprehensive plan, uh, the building significance, criteria, design commission charter, and the neighbor sentiment. So I think we're behaving exactly as we said we were going to, uh, and I think that's something to be proud of. So, I wanna thank the, the board for their support of the design commission's decision here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Next is Greg Menzies, but only if he says something different than his wife.
She said it all, thank you.
Okay, and then Martin... Perfect, perfect, perfect. And next is Martin Bauer. And then Joe Spinosa.
Well, good evening. At the risk of being the lone disenter here, um, my position is this house is pretty, no question, at least from the outside. It's old, maybe it's historic, but not everything old or historic is necessarily worth preserving. But I actually want to see historic preservation. I grew up in a city that is over two thousand years old. I know what history looks like, more than a hundred and fifty years. We should encourage preservation whenever it's possible, but we shouldn't mandate it. At least not for a home that was never anything other than a single-family home and is mostly old. Preservation is worthwhile. It is a good objective to have, but it should not be considered to exist in isolation and be treated as an absolute. A competing objective... A competing objective that I believe here in the United States we also should uphold is to protect the right of private owners to mostly do with their property as they deem fit and as they, in their own opinion, have determined to be appropriate. I don't think you should ignore the rights of property owners. I don't think you should force a financially unviable rehab. I've heard opposing opinions on that. I don't know what is true, but I do know that there are dozens of other homes for which you will put a significant hardship on the shoulders of the owners when they cannot afford to rehab their house and they cannot sell their house because nobody is going to buy it because it's a money pit. Said differently, to massively interfere with a private owner's property rights is flat-out wrong. I would have therefore urged you to uphold the appeal, which I understand you will not do, but let me paint a hypothetical. This house may well be beyond repair. This house may well not get sold ever again. This house may well become an eyesore. For that matter, this house could be painted black or purple with pink polka dots without any approval needed, and it would be hideous. I don't think that we should let it get to that point. If anybody else wants to purchase that home, if the Hannah neighbors want to purchase that home, that would be fantastic. If someone is out there who wants to rescue the home, that would be great, but I don't think we should so, in such a cavalier fashion, take away a private owner's right to their property. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bauer. Next is Joseph Spinoso, and then John Baruk.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you. My name is Joe Spinoso. I'm not going to waste a bunch of time hitting a bunch of points that everybody has already talked about, so I figured we should talk about the reasons to demolish 716. First off, more waste. Who doesn't love more waste? The EPA estimated that teardown will create about 90% more waste than rehabilitation will. And who doesn't want to create more waste? Second, we could set the precedent that historic preservation is not really one of our values here. We could lose this house and, you know, if we lose this one, what's to help us maintain the rest of our architectural heritage and significance and the things that define us as a, as a, as a village here and separate us from our neighbors? We can also go for the route of homogenization, more of the same new builds, more of the, more of the same kind of trend of architecture instead of keeping that, again, the characteristics that drew a lot of us to this village in the first place, and help bring in additional commerce as well for people that are looking for that old town, old village feel, the distinction that, that Arlington Heights brings as well. Also, there's the uncertainty. I live at 727 North Vale, which is directly behind where these builds are going on right now, and I understand that one of the builds was put on a stop work because of a deviation from the original plans that were submitted to the village. Yeah, I mean, all of my best relationships have been built on uncertainty and mistrust, so if that's going to be the trend that they're going to set, then, you know, let's, let's, we're in, in route for more surprises than with 716. Sorry. In conclusion, Arlington Heights isn't just an amalgamation of structures. It's really a reflection of our shared history. Preserving the architectural fabric of our community is crucial to maintaining the unique character that sets us apart from our neighboring villages. In conclusion, I urge the Board of Trustees to carefully consider the decision you all make and prioritize the preservation of Arlington Heights' architectural heritage. Let this decision be guided by a commitment to the values that define our community, sustainability and historic preservation. Thank you all for your time and your dedication to preserving the architectural history of Arlington Heights.
Thanks, Mr. Spinoso. And then next is John Baruk, and then Anne Musaf.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for being here. I live at 710 North Highland, and I've been a resident of Arlington Heights for 45 years, 39 of them in that house. The other six were on 800 North Vale. Our family's grown up here. As you so appropriately have defined, we're a great community. People want to live here. And I know the developers probably had an issue at this point, and he's going to have an issue. As you have highlighted, do your homework. I mean, he subdivided the thing, made lots of money on the two properties, and, you know, aforementioned comments about having to get a variance, being before you twice kind of is like not a good roadmap of how you run a business in Arlington Heights. So I just want to say thanks for the integrity that you have shown, the understanding of community that you show. It's not just one neighborhood. Hannah is kind of special. There's a lot of old homes there. Ours is 125 years. We had it renovated about six years ago, put in two and a half times what we paid for it. You may have to do something like that, but it's a very desirable place to live. And the, the guidance that staff, our codes, provide to people is what helps us maintain that. And so I thank you for supporting staff and supporting the, you know, the way we live here. It is a great place to live.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Baruk. Next is Anne Musaf, and then Charles Craig.
I have no written piece of information. I, I, I was a 20-year veteran at District 25. I've lived in the district for 49 years in a house that was built at the end of Dunton and Thomas. I am supporting the Design Commission's rejection of this piece of development, having seen that house over many decades, and having known one of the last younger residents, Rachel Waite, who lived there, and her, her whole family grew up in that house, generations. And I had the, I want to say the honor of being invited into that house a long time ago, and then when they sold the piece of property. So to me, it's a historic piece of land. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anne. Next is Charles Craig, and then the last card I have is Catherine Gruber.
Hello, Board, thank you very much for your looking into this situation. I would just say that I hope that you concur and deny the changing of the Design Commission vote and deny the demolition of the home. It's a beautiful house. I know it probably needs a lot of work, but it's one of those homes, one of those properties where I've gone by, walked by, ridden my bike by, and every time you go by it, your eyes turn to it, and you look at it and notice it. And that's the type of homes that hopefully we will preserve in this town going forward. One thing to keep in mind, in my experience, when it's been said that there's no record of this, that there's no record of that, and we don't know what it was used as historically, and even the Historical Society, I know, there's many places in town that things have happened that aren't part of the historical record, and that things might have happened in that house I don't know that they were, but there might have been many important things happen in that house that no one knows about today, but they're still historically and culturally important, so thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Craig. And then last is Catherine Gruber.
So I live at 705 North Vale, so similar to Joe, right, we share the alley where this is going on. And one of the major learning factors to Hannah is the diversity of home types, styles, and ages. We need to preserve significant architectural and historical homes. As we know, 716 North Dunton is rated exceptional. It's arguably the crown jewel of Hannah and Arlington Heights. It's an honor to share a historic alley with such a rare gem. Nothing built can even come close to what is existing.
Thank you, Catherine. I think we've got a couple more cards. First is Justin Walsh, and then Mike, can't read your last name, Land whatever.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the time tonight. My name's Justin Walsh. I'm the resident at 710 North Dunton, so I live directly next to this property. Ultimately, for myself and my family, our biggest concern is what happens next. I understand that there's a lot of people that are very passionate about not tearing this house down. I don't really care either way. My concern is ultimately what happens with this property when it's left in the state that it's in. I have three young children, and we love Arlington Heights. We've been here for over 12 years and went to high school here. And ultimately, we live next to a dilapidated property at Fremont, Fremont and Haddo that was sitting in disrepair for almost four years, and it was a horrible situation that no one has still gotten out of. And I see that happening here, and I guess my biggest ask is, what do we do and what can we do if this does not get torn down or fixed?
All right, thanks, Justin. Mike, you're going to have to pronounce her last name for me.
Yeah, it's Dutch, it's the unique one. My name's Mike Landite. I'm the property owner at 720 North Dunn, so I'm also directly in that store to this property. Similar to Justin, I'm, I have a very similar concern as to, you know, what happens next. I, I also think there's probably ways to, you know, looking at 13.7A, B, and C, I think you can probably look at 13.7A and B and figure out a way to, to save at least a portion of this architectural and aesthetic and cultural value with being able to not down and demolish most of this house, if the new plan was, you know, appropriately accommodating. I, I also think, you know, Martin made a good point as well. It's, it's, it seems like it's a slippery slope to mandate something like this onto, onto a property owner, especially with the timeline being clarified, you know, he had, he had bought in 2018, but then a couple of years later, it was decided that it did have some historical value, I think. You know, those things, I, I know I'm not going to change your minds tonight, but I think it's setting a little bit of a difficult precedence should this happen again, and maybe we should look at clarifying a more concrete way where it comes up when you do a title search or deed search, so that people know and understand what they're getting into when you do purchase a property like this, because I, I do think a new house would look, would look better in that store. You know, I've seen that house, especially on the back side of the house, on the alley side. The, the curb appeal is there, definitely, but on the, on the alley side, I think you get in a different view, and that's what we're going to see every day as, as neighbors. So I think, you know, all these things, and, and, yeah, I think that's really all I had to say.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, we've got one more blue card coming. Is there anyone else who wants to address? I hate to ask, but is there anyone else who wants to address the board on this issue besides Gary? Gary, Gary Lira. Hi, Gary.
Good evening. My name is Gary Lira, resident of the town, lived here since 1994, architect in the town also, firm here since 2001. I love old buildings. We renovate old buildings constantly, and those are some of the most rewarding projects, just like Mr. Tenalia has come about in his past. The question that I have about this is due to the subjectivity of the code, because it's based on opinion. It's not based on objectivity. We're leaning, as a village, on a report that was done by grad students. They're grad students. I was a grad student one time, and what I am now compared to what I was then is drastically different, drastically different. And to say that, that report is good and doesn't need to be validated, I think, is something that we, as a village, need to strive better on. We can't be leaning on a report that was done by students in 2004. That report also recommended that the village take five steps, and one is that, one of them is identifying zones or buildings specifically, not just on a basic, kind of A, B, C on that. So the question I have is why, and the gentleman just before me touched on, is we, this, this wonderful home has been sitting there since 1890, and we're going to wait until they purchase the house to say they can't do something with it when we've had this report in our hands since 2004? That's the subjectivity that I have a problem with and my clients have a problem with when they go in front of the Design Commission. Those architects are wonderful people. They have five, six different opinions. They have a different opinion than me. If I was sitting on a board, I'd have a different opinion than them. That's the subjectivity. We need to have objectivity, and that doesn't mean that after, and, and I don't know the builder of this home, have no allegiance with him, it's really not fair to them to say, you can't tear it down now after they bought it, when we've known since 2004 that this could be one of the houses that we want to save. We need to do better as a village then and say, these are the houses, so when somebody goes to buy it, they know they can't tear it down. Or, as a member on the Design Commission Board has said multiple times that I presented to them, is that the residents can create a covenant and say, these homes, we're going to say, are not going to be torn down. And I think there's a property, a block in Hannah, that just did something similar to that, where they restricted their height and their zoning. They created like a little covenant. That's all I have to say about this, is we need to do better with the subjectivity and take that away.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Lira. All right, I am going to close then the public comment, but I am going to go back to the appellant, Mr. Pandersky here, Mr. Delegio. Do you guys have anything to add? I'm going to give them the last word as their appeal.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time tonight, and obviously we'll, we will be disappointed in your final decision tonight, but I do appreciate the dialogue. And I think as a follow-up to some of the comments that have been made here, I too, as an attorney, have to indicate that there is a lack of real objectivity here. You know, there's been a great emotion come out here tonight, and I, and I worry that what you're saying is historic is simply old, and that old becomes historic. That's not objectively how we look at historical preservation. You know, I've cited the federal rules that govern the actual restoration or the actual registration of historic homes and protection of homes, and I, as I've argued before, I don't believe this home would ever qualify, notwithstanding the comments that have been made here and the statement from the State Office. State Office comments obviously were based on, again, on a photograph. There's been no inspection of our property. No one asked us to, to provide access, which we would have otherwise done. That there has to be some sense of objectivity here. And based on a reading of the federal code, I can tell you that objectively, the U.S. Department of the Interior is never going to approve this as a historic home based on all of the changes that prior owners have made, not that something we've done, but the addition and the changes internally are going to, would deny this home any type of registration. That's just the simple fact of life. I do believe that you are imposing an unfair burden on us. Our, our budget is not sky-high. Our budget was based on realistic changes that have to be made to make this home truly livable. And at $1 million, we just can't see rehabbing this house. And that's why, as Vincent mentioned, from a practical standpoint, we sought the right to demolish it and to build a new home that you all would be proud of. With that, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for your time tonight and all of you for your attention. It's a good discussion, but I would hope that you will continue this conversation because I would like to see you rethink your ordinance and perhaps add, add some meat to some of your definitions. I think that that would do all of us some good as, as we move forward and try to evaluate some of these properties.
Thanks, Mr. Pandersky. Well, coming back to the board then, this has been a good discussion. We appreciate everybody's input and participation, you know. This is a very important decision for us to make here this evening, and it's going to really define us as a community in terms of what, what's important to us. And so I really appreciate your, all of your comments. I do want to say that I do agree with some of Mr. Bauer's your comments. I do want to say that I do agree with some of Mr. Bauer's comments, and I express this to those residents, the neighbors that I met with at the home about 10 days ago. And one of the concerns I raised was the rights of property owners to do what they want with their own property. But I did tell those people that I met with that there are limits in certain situations, and I believe we do have defined limits that we're adhering to in this situation here this evening. And the other thing I mentioned, which was raised by Mr. Bauer and others, was what is this home going to look like five years from now, 10 years from now? Because the people living across the street don't want to look at a home that's falling apart. And so I'm hoping that the publicity that this situation, this home, has garnered from our discussion this evening, and hopefully will be reported out in the newspapers tomorrow and in the days ahead, that a purchaser will come forward, somebody who's very interested in remodeling and rehabbing this very fine piece of architecture within our community. And so those are my concerns and my hope. But I am in favor of the motion. So any other comments from the Board? Trustee Tenalia?
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. Three quick things. I remember when the estate sale happened, and I remember, because I live right in the neighborhood, just a few doors away, and I thought to myself, that's going to be interesting to see what happens with this. It was frightening to think about, and at the same time, I thought, wow, somebody's really going to have to spend some time, some money, and some energy to make this happen. So the decision to separate everything and then, you know, find out, maybe we're down the road that we're in trouble with here, or the expense of it all, that's a tough nut to handle. And I get it. I feel sorry for these investors and this developer, and the attorney who spoke, like I said before, very eloquently about it all. But that's a road that shows to go down. And the second thing I want to say is I was on the Design Commission, as a member of the Design Commission, when the Art Institute came and did this, all this work for us. And it was wonderful. They stepped up and did it. Charles was the leader from staff, and it was presented to us in such a high-profile way. These kids did a great job, and they weren't just kids. These were masters, grad students, doing a really great job, collaborating and codifying everything that we have here. And again, there are houses that I just don't ever want to see torn down. But that brings up the last of my three comments, and Gary Lira brought it up before I could. What next? What happens next? How do we continue to protect this? Do we need some more teeth? Not just this house. All the houses similar, and the buildings. There are office buildings. It's not just single-family homes. So maybe this is the beginning of that next level that probably should have happened back when the Art Institute prepared this. So I agree. I agree. That's probably where we need to go. And maybe staff, Randy, maybe we can start dialogue going down that road. And in somewhat of a voluntary fashion, we've got a number of experts here tonight who either live in these homes or work in departments for the state that understand this stuff way better than any of us do here. But it needs, in my opinion, needs to happen. More needs to happen. What we have right now, great, but it could be better, I think. Those are my thoughts.
Okay. Anything further? We have a motion and a second by trustee Baldino, seconded by trustee Tenalia. Let's take a roll call.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. All right. Again, thank you all for your participation in this very good discussion. Thank you. All right, we have, we have no other new business, so we'll move on to the report of the village manager, Mr. Leclerc. Anything?
Nothing further this evening.
Okay. Anything from the Board under petitions and communications? If not, an entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By trustee Baldino, seconded by trustee Labads. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for joining us this evening.